Welcome.
I'd like to call this meeting to order.
First order of business.
Welcome to the District of Bag, United States Department of Public Safety. As we're in the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, in this soul, liberty and justice for all.
I'll stop with the mic so we can record it. And the first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. We have a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. Recommend approval of the minutes October 15th, 2019, regular council meeting. Everybody have a chance to review them, see any deletions or changes. Motion to approve. I'll second it. You got a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. Recommend to approve the list of claims for October 2019. Everybody had a chance to look at those, any question on them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, for the claims. Is there a claim or a motion to approve?
I'll second it. We have a recommendation in a second to approve the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. To review the financial statements of General Waters, who funds it has around 1031.
Motion to table.
I'll second. We have a motion to table, all in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. Liquor store management report, Jen. I see we had a pretty good month, Jen, and I see the person in November just jumped a little ahead, but it's real busy, I guess, for Halloween, after Halloween, the day after Halloween.
Yeah, that was a kind of fifty-fifty. I wasn't sure if people would come out the day after Halloween, but I thought with it being Friday, that would be a good, you know, idea to do it on that day. But it was a great turnout.
Yeah, it was a great, from what I understand, talking to some people over there, dressed up and everything. How was the staffing on that night?
I honestly had one on. I wasn't expecting it to be crazy busy, but luckily I did have another bartender there that jumped in, and I was there too for it, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to handle them, because there's always these fifty-fifty days. But I wouldn't, to be honest with you, I wouldn't rely on the bartender to call you on some of those nights that you might think it'd be fifty-fifty. Just a quick call to the bartender around nine, ten o'clock might be a good recommendation, because like you said, you had it kind of staffed anyway. But going ahead, if there's one of those nights that you're not quite sure about it, just call and check in, because.
Well, I was there that night.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but that's the same thing. If you check on a so-called potential night, and then you can call any additional help if they have it. You've got to have a cover, so that's fine, but going forward, I think you want to make sure that as a practice, any potential that could happen, you're not sure of, just check in, and you do the calling, because I don't always expect the bartender to call, because I know they have reasons, they figure they can handle it themselves. So just make that kind of a habit. Other than that, I see, I think it looks like we're on a nice schedule, again.
Are we ahead of what we were last year?
Yep, and I have full faith that we're going to do that for November already, just looking at the numbers, so I think we're going to be just fine.
Any issues there?
Uh, nothing major at the moment. We are going to need to fix a few things eventually, but.
You know, that's another thing too, we're coming up with our November 25th budget, I think is our date for our budget. I'd like to hear from you, Nick, other people, any needs, immediate needs, kind of some cost, if you have any.
Mr. Mayor, I asked Jen and Nick to attend with us our November 23rd budget meeting. It's been my experience that when you have your department heads with you, they can better off tell us what they need and want to spend their money on than what we do. So I already took it upon me.
Well, we just don't need you enough. But that's exactly what we have to know with budgeting, if there's some unexpected costs, we like to try to get it budgeted in right away, and exactly the reason, so good. Any other questions for, motion to approve?
I'll second it.
You got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Nick, you're the next guy up. Well, you do not, so snowballs at the fold here, and I hope you're prepared for it.
Yep, water system's ready, all hydrants are done, and seasonals are gone for the year, so.
Seasonals are gone. We need to give us a little update on the skating rink.
Skating rink, it should be completed, hopefully, I'm open by the weekend. They started the glass last week, but it was froze together, so we have to bring it all over to the shop and get a thought of it.
The glass, are the rails up, or do they put the rails up to get glass fitting?
Yep.
Have they put the rails up?
No, because there's a rubber seal that goes in them as well, so everything's over here.
Have you talked to them?
Yep, yep, they were going to come yesterday, it was too cold, so hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah, it's supposed to be in the thirty, so.
Yeah, be a great time to do it.
And then, uh, Wilbur brought to our attention that we had some of the plastic covers on the boards that needed some attention, you replaced them and you brought some.
Started on them, I have a couple more over there.
We had some spares then that come with them, so good, and got them heated up, get their plastic, I suppose, to put on.
Yeah, just got to get them warmed up.
I want them installed, we push them and snakes themselves on.
Yeah, there might be a couple that we might have to order, I'll have to get the dimensions off from Becker Arena Products, simple, they can add them to us in a couple days.
Wait till it's twenty below to be putting them on either, so. Uh, as far as the inside is, you know, I know it's frozen, everything, is the inside fairly level?
Nah, not the best, but I can give it, there's some clumps and stuff, but as we work it, I'll scrape them up.
Again, uh, we get some, a little bit of better weather coming, so probably next week you could get in there and maybe just cuff the top down if it melds enough and get it as smooth as you can, just save some on it. Make sure to get rocks out of there, if there's any rocks, I didn't see a few.
I did, there is a couple in there, yes, I noticed them too.
Okay, and I did talk to you about the fire pit, you have a rock over there, Navy Corry's number, so hopefully we'll get some decent weather to reinstall the rock on.
Yeah, we should be able to get that.
And as far as that, you got wood for the fire, you got wood picked up for it?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep, well, we'll get a little bit more, but.
Uh, other issues?
Um, I guess, I have a question too from you guys, in case you do get a lot of snow this year, it would be all right if I remove the south end of these tennis nets, we can stockpile snow in here? With this warm weather coming, I can take this south end off. And I do, I have in my possession, I guess we'll talk about it again too at the budget meeting, about buying a snow bucket from Travis Thompson. I used it all last winter.
Did, um, on 130, did you get all the kettles, waters, curb stops pushed out and do?
Not all of them, no. No, I got some of them, but not all of them, no.
Get them down?
Yep.
Some snowmobile, hit some, or something like that, they slide down hard poles, so.
Right, yep, yeah, there's eighteen inches of play in them.
And I do, I, I, you did get all the signs up?
Yep, all the signs are up.
All the signs? Everett Ramsey called me about a hole over by his place, have you, I guess you looked at it?
Mm-hmm.
What do we got going on there?
Uh, that, added piece of pipe that I put in, he wanted to take him back out, because it was on his property, so I went and took it out. We made it the best we could by hand for now, but it, it, nothing I could do, it's just too wet, I'll have to do it next summer.
How many feet did you have to remove, four, five feet, a short piece, wasn't it?
No, yeah, about five feet. Where we put that forty-five on it and turned it?
He didn't want the forty-five?
Nope, he didn't want it. It added it so you could mow over it and everything, it was really nice, but.
You should have checked with us, I believe we have an easement for that, I don't think we had to remove that. No, that was the original agreement, that was in the original ones, but that's all right.
I kept everything, I can go back in easy enough.
I think we had the original assignment.
Yeah.
May I make sure that fire hydrant by my place gets marked or whatever, I have a little snowmobile coming over the top of that one.
Yeah, I'll use, I have that, one of them big county barrels, and then probably I think I'll put Mark Holmes down there on it.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have to do it, but we probably should make up a sign that just says "Snowmobile Trail." You know, we developed that alleyway through, behind Canada Lever, along the trail now, just so it's clearly marked, because, you know, so that they turn here and hit. I think it'll dig that road, it's pretty obvious.
Right, I believe I have some of that.
Once the graver gets down there, then they'll know where to go.
Well, I think I have some of the signage too on that last year, I think I got from Mike Hyboll, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty obvious, but at the same time. Are you going to plow the alleys, or is Travis going to do that? Or we're going to do that?
I'll do the alleys, yeah.
Unless it's more than we can handle, you know, when you get a three-foot snow or something, then we'll try to, we'll be doing that.
Yeah.
I got a question, when most guys in the city of the Falls came by and did their smoke test, sewer smoke test, over on my vacant property?
Yeah, that was, that was S C H, yep.
They, smoke coming out, they said that those sewer caps are, those sewer openings were not capped. Do we need to do something with those?
That's East Cooch's sewer, yeah, that's not Rainier's sewer.
I know, but I mean, do I, as a property owner, or Timmy, do we have to?
If smoke's coming out and they're uncapped, they should have been noted and duly capped, I mean, they're real simple.
Nobody capped them.
And whether North Cooch lines, Nick, I want you to call North Cooch, or identify Wilbur, you know where they are.
Yeah, oh yeah, and smoke, it's pouring on them.
Yeah, well, I know you know where they are, but if Nick don't know where they are, but we want North Cooch to cap them, we're all in just together, North Cooch is, gets a, you know, a big influence of water again, you know, we all ended up paying for.
That's right.
Larry here to start with, so I wanted to make sure if you know any uncapped sewer, whether they're hard or not. Nick, follow that up and make sure.
Yeah, I can do that.
Willbur will show you, or get them, and make sure North Cooch gets over and gets them capped immediately. I think Jill Bradburn, where she built the new place, did the smoke tests there, and I don't think the cap is on it either.
Okay, I can let them know.
Yeah, tell them we want them attended, because, you know, if anything, we even come in, yeah, we all pay that sewer bill, so. Let's see. You know, I can't think of anything else.
No, I don't have anything for you guys right now either.
Did you just get that tree cut down?
Yep, yep, that's all cleaned up.
Okay. All right, then, if there's nothing else for Nick, thanks, Nick.
Thanks, guys.
Make sure you do that sewer thing, and then checking on the boards.
I get it out.
All right. Now, let's see the next order of business. County group 130 update, was final seated, the final seating is there, oh, I guess forgot, Nick, did you ever get those couple loads of gravel, I was.
Daddy said they weren't warm enough.
Huh?
Daddy said they weren't warm enough. Daddy said you agree with me with warm enough.
Okay, well, that's next week, there's probably one, maybe two loads of gravel that would have to be put on all crush rock driveways, and you know, they're down to an inch and a half, a little bit here and there, I know two truckloads will be more than sufficient. And then the only one spot right at the intersection of 120 here, and, uh, one of the radiuses on the curb, but Nick knows where it is, so we're going to spread them ourselves, we will, you know, part the job, but that's basically all there is, there's one little piece of sidewalk, driveway approach, and the black, it should be a black cop, that's what, fifteen feet wide, and, uh, six, eight feet driveway going into the Falls.
Yeah, did that get tarred?
No, that did not get tarred, and that is the only remaining item, everything else is pretty acceptable, we still have a five percent retention on the project, we'll probably reduce that down to a couple percent, and we still owe a couple, two, three thousand bucks to, you know, get that little piece of work done. Other than that, I don't see anything to ask to be done.
Did Tony Coop's yard where the gas line was dug up, did that get put back?
Uh, you know, I think, Nick, maybe you could check on that.
No, I don't think Tony did, because Stan Harrison did, do you?
Yeah, I got calls from this, this little, kind of this little rust spots there.
Yeah, they said some stuff didn't get done yet.
Okay, we have finally a job out, as far as I know, the.
And one other thing is the alleyway between, you know, the creek, that's, was flattened out or.
And that's why we're going to, you know, like you said, basically the job was back.
So it gets done.
What's probably, we'd call it substantially complete, there's going to be a few things, we do have retention yet of the amount of five percent, which is, you know, the total project is about two hundred and thirty-six thousand, I mean, the total, we had the seven thousand clearing to the two twenty-one. I think the total project, you know, earned to date, I think it's two hundred and thirty-six thousand earned to date, and, uh, you know, like I said, there's a, of that, we have five percent, so we have about twelve thousand dollars in retention, and we'll make sure all the things in the spring.
Take care of it.
Capture and fix it up.
Correct.
You know, actually, it come in substantially under what we wanted for, probably half what we wanted for, so that's a good, good thing, we've got a nice looking job, a little bit, I know it was a little bit of a struggle, but still got a good ride. Moving on then, Main Street parking options, I think, did you guys get that back, there's some.
I didn't get it, it's everybody.
Oh, okay, what I did is, is I bumped into Joe Sutherland, who did, works for W S N now, he did the county, he's made for the county, when we worked with the county, and then continued on as the consulting engineer for W S N through the county, and I contacted him, and he looked at it, and I gave him a, uh, a general idea of what, I had talked to all the property owners over there, and they could talk to every one of them, so there was a pretty good consensus of what we were attempting to do or trying to do, and, uh, so he has a good ball work of that, and he gave us a proposal, a lump sum proposal on the engineering services for that. Right now, we're looking at some funding options to do that bit, and I think we'll have them by tomorrow, our options are, you know, whether we can use some of the leftover bonding money and stuff like that, so there's some, just some questions we have to answer tomorrow, but by next council meeting, you know, we should, should be able to let you know our options on funding it, and how we'd, how we fund it, and, uh, and at that time, you know, if we decide to go ahead, then we have an engineering proposal, and we'll act on that or not act on it. So it's coming right along, so the residents that are doing anything there will, will be, at the next council meeting, she'll be able to get a, you know, a pretty good story on it. With that said, we're moving on to the planning zoning appointments, let's see, I have my recommendations for them. Okay, uh, and for the council representative, I think that's important, Wilbur served us for, how many years did he work, four, five, six?
Uh, no, seven, and about eight and a half years.
And he currently has served us for those years, and I thank him for his participation in that, and his guidance, and helping us get through some of our issues, and I think he wishes now to resign from that position, and I'm going to appoint Joanne as our council representative on that, and the other members I'm going to appoint to that, recommend would be Mary Ann Kasseck, Vlad Kaczynski, Jeff McCart, Berta Wilcox. And the reason I'm doing that, I've kept several of the existing commissioners, so going forward, we have some new people going on, because just like Wilbur, some people tend to get off, we want, we want some continuity, some existing people, but also some new people, and I think every area basically is represented by those choices. So those are my choices, again, Mary Ann Kasseck, Vlad Kaczynski, Jeff McCart, Berta Wilcox, and Joanne Agnew as the council representative. Do we need a motion on that, right?
Yes.
So I'll need a motion on that, or open for discussion. Any discussion? I'll make that motion. I'll second. We got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carried. Okay, the last order of business will be, just to remind you guys, on November 25th, we have a special meeting at six o'clock for the 2020 budget planning thing, and again, I've been reviewing some of the issues here and that, and, uh, and I guess we'll talk about that on, on then, so we're looking good, we've got, everything come in as far as his budget went, we kind of made it, right? And so we did a lot of good budget planning, we managed to keep it within the budget, and we're here today, next 25th, and hopefully we have a little more money to work with, and maybe we can do some more things, so. With that said, I'd like to just open it up to open forum. John.
I was in the sewer district offices today, and I found out that there was a problem with the lift station that was by the, the river tracks, and I was told that it was, there was plugging or something in one of the pumps, and it was due to some byproducts from the distilling process, apparently they've started up over there, so, um, I mean, this is what I heard.
Yeah.
So I'm not defending anybody that gives me, but was, was there anything said in the, by the mechanical engineer about, you know, treatment of sewage, or?
They just have household sewage there, any of their byproducts from, actually, they're not even open, so I don't think any of their toilets or anything are working right now, uh, they do have their, their stills, or their brewing department, John, is operational, but they haven't brewed anything, I think they brewed one third of a batch or something, they got one tote of, they got one tote of residue, I was actually in there today, so that residue, they got one third of a tote of residue, as a matter of fact, I believe Randy Hyball's going to come and pick up the tote of residue, which is the mash, you know.
Yeah, mash.
And Randy Hyball is going to come and get it.
They sent Bob, wasn't it?
Yeah, you know, they could have flushed the lines, John, and whatever was in them, but.
That could be, but the thing is, there should be a meeting with the sewer district, or Tim Rainier.
Well, absolutely.
Because there was no, actually, what's supposed to be done, who that's supposed to judge, really, is, uh, the city people, Rainier should have had a meeting with sewer district, um, talking about what kind of F1 that is coming from there, because sometimes you're required to do a three-month agreement or something like that, or a special pricing, because of.
What I'll do, John, because they're not in operation yet, but prior to starting up operation, as far as I know, but the only thing they've done, they, they flushed all their baths and their stills and stuff, and they got, they got a tote over there, about that field of corn mash, and whether it's corn mash or rye mash or something, but it's in a vat waiting for Randy Hyball to, I guess, come and get it, or somebody to haul it away, and other than that, I don't know of anything that they dumped in the sewer. I'll bring that, that's a good point, because whatever, they are going to be in operation, and they are going to be dumping, obviously, the hotel sewage in there, but anything coming from that vending operation or the distilling operation, yeah, we want to know what it is.
Should we set up a meeting with?
Yeah, I think we'll set it up, Rainier will set up with the sewer district, and the sewer district, whether, whether it's John, John, and Canada Lever, and whether it's, well, John, I think he'd be perfect, because then at the sewer district, I'll set up a meeting with him, we'll go over there, and then we'll talk to the distiller, who's that Charlie, what he's going to be dumping into the thing, and then you can relay that message, John, to the sewer district, if they have any concerns about it, you can show them what they're pumping, or tell them, and then you just tell Rainier's going to be dumping this in.
This has happened before with industrial processes, with dealing with the man can have one man can.
Okay, well, we'll definitely get that, because they're going to start, like I said, they flushed all their tanks, now they could be long, and I see their kitchen is just about done, not that they're cooking anything, but, you know, they plan to open in December, so there's going to be things going, and again, you know, making aware that to put the right things in the right spot, and I'm sure they've got grease fats, and they've got, you know, they've been under strict state scrutiny under there as far as compliance by the plumbing inspectors, so I'm guessing they've got the right apparatuses in place, you know, just making sure they're being used, so. Yeah, we'll, I'll call you when the Charlie's available, maybe tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, we'll go through that and make sure that, so you can, when's your next board meeting with the?
Uh, third Tuesday, whenever that is.
Third Tuesday, next week.
Next week, yeah, we'll do it before then, so you can definitely tell it, remind you of that, so we can get that set up, whether it's tomorrow or the next day, just want to make sure Charlie's there, he's the distiller.
Yeah.
Anything else in the audience, Berta?
Um, Red Club wants everyone to know that we're having our Christmas party on Sunday, the eighth.
What kind of party?
The Christmas party that we have every year.
Okay.
Sunday, eighth, from one to three.
One of December eighth?
Yep, and Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be there, we're going to have a craft world of this year again, Tammy and I got that put together, um, we're going to try to display rights again, but it never seems to happen, it's too cold, the horses can't make it, so we just said, we're just going to do a ton of crap of them, we're going to be decorating the week before, Nick, you're going to help with our tree rates, like you always do, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I think that's all on the Christmas party, I do want to thank Jen and the bartenders, I did our reports, because I've reported for the last two months, E T A's, the bartenders are pushing them, putting them on the counters, our rent last year for September and October was four hundred dollars, this year was thirteen hundred, and part of that is because last month we had a record month with the E T A's, we had, um, thirteen hundred dollars deposited from just the electronic pull tab, so thank you for guys taking that as extra work and extra time with that, so, it's open, everybody.
The pull tab revenue is that the liquor store recognizes, that's in your statement though, isn't it? You know, in your earnings statement.
But yeah, but my records, from eight, January of eighteen, oh, wait, January through October of eighteen and nineteen, we've paid twenty-three hundred dollars more in rent to the community from, from right now, and from last year to this year.
Okay.
And I really can truly think the E T A's is just enhancing the paper pull tabs, because the paper pull tabs, the rent on that was gone.
Yeah.
Way higher, yeah.
They had another five.
They do feed on it, yeah, so it's going good, and it is extra work, so appreciate that, or rent.
I got a question, you know, I know we did mid-continental, is that lease about a, a mid-continental lease?
For?
My television and stuff that they put in here. It was about, it was about four or five years ago when I first.
Oh, the franchise agreement?
Yeah, franchise agreement.
I think it's a ten-year agreement, but.
Only a ten-year?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know it was five years or ten. Okay, Will, there's nothing else?
One little question, and I could probably come in and get it off the budget, but what is our, the income, rental income for the community building per year?
Around ten grand.
Ten thousand?
Yeah, something, give or take.
I see a hand up in the back, yes.
Oh, I was wondering if they just mentioned your plan for the rules, for the parking?
Yes.
And I'm just not sure I understood the whole.
Can you speak up, Chris, I can't hear you.
I'm not sure I understood your plan for the parking, all the, you know, we have a, a graph of all the parking in the community, yeah?
I, you know, Chris, I got something here, if you could read it, this, when I talked to Joe Sutherland, he pretty well described. talked to Joe Sutherland, he pretty well described, um, what would have to take place there, you know, what we discussed about, like I said, I, I talked with you, I talked with, uh, the Joneses, basically the only one I haven't talked to is Tim and Stephanie, but everybody else I talked to, and, uh, if you wanna take this, I don't know if I'm talking, but this is, this is basically, uh, what, that's stuff I talked to the Joneses and, and Joey Simpson, yourself, and, uh, there's no drawings, no nothing, we, we haven't contacted, contracted any services yet, uh, right now we're looking at the funding mechanisms, how we pay for it, some kind of preliminary costs, so we got a little more information by next week, we should have, you know, by, you know, within the next few days, it should have, have some of those answers, so I can give you a little more detail by next council meeting.
And then that's a week from today, a week from today?
Yeah, a week from today.
And then, so, when will, I mean, once we have a drawing, a haul, a mechanism?
Yeah, until we, until we contact, uh, uh, an engineer services, we won't have no drawings, uh, but, you know what I mean, we haven't con, contracted an engineer, I just took him, walked him, showed him visibly, showed him the street, and, and he seen what he might have to do to design a project, and, and he, you know, implications it might have, if you read through that, it, it's a really good narrative of, of what he sees has to be done, and then, you know, what, what we'd like to be done, and then, then we'll, we'll be talking to him later if we can, you know, like I said, there's, there's a few questions here, so by next council meeting, I'll have some definitive answers for you, and then we would, they say we proceeded to go ahead, then we proceed with the design, and, uh, then he'd also see if he could piggyback with the county to make it one project instead of two, we pay for our project, but the county pays for the other one, and, uh, it would just cut down on some engineering services, and it would maybe get us a better price on, on asphalt and concrete, things like that, but if it's not possible, he, he would check that, if it's not possible to piggyback, then we, we could do it on our own.
So it would still be opportunity for, for time from the big.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, that's when we get to the design stage, I'll bring the engineer in, and then we'll discuss it with the property owners in the city, exactly, it's right now, it's just a preliminary thing, contracting engineering services to design a road, and before we do that, we're gonna set up a, a, a funding mechanism.
I guess I was just trying to ask you, for a timeline, for, I mean, is this 15 months or is it 15 weeks?
The funding mechanism we should know tomorrow, or the next few days, right? We should have an answer, we gotta call our bonding, uh, lawyer and stuff like that, just to see in funding, and come up with reasonable, uh, idea and plan on that, and then after that, we'd, we'd contact the engineer, and then we'd go through the planning stage, and, and we, we just wanna be ready by next spring, that's, that's what it'd be, so that the plans be drafted during the winter months here, so next, you know, early May, we could, we could start the project, if we decide to go ahead with it, and again, I, I, I think there's good merit to it and everything, so we just wanna go about it correctly.
John? You just talked about bonding, uh, the, you're going to be talking to the bonding people, could we?
Uh, John, the question, the question, uh, I'm telling you about bonding, that we have bonding funds available already, and what projects we can use them for or can't use them for, is the question we're gonna be asking the bonding company, we have a couple hundred thousand.
Which bonding company?
Huh?
It was from that county.
It's your county Road 130.
We had bonded more, 'cause remember we were gonna do.
We, we have additional money, already bonded, already borrowed, and, and, and we can see if we can use it somewhere else.
All right, all right.
That's, that's the question we have to ask.
We're not gonna do more than that?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what we have to find out, we have additional funds, but where, where we can use them, and, and how we can use them.
It's not so much additional, it's leftover from a project.
Yeah, yeah, I understand 130 came in, 'cause you changed the design.
Yep.
So you could say it's money, but the money that's left over, you're not gonna decrease the debt, you're gonna, you're not gonna try to decrease the debt, you're gonna use it for something else.
When we bonded for that, we actually bonded for three projects, and that's what we're looking at, is how much money we got, and what projects we can, can use it for.
Well, we had a hearing with the bonding guy.
Huh?
From, like, Minnesota Cities, uh, that, he, he just mentioned, he was just talking about County Road 130, he wasn't talking about anything else, I think.
Well, that's not true, I don't know what he told you, but we, we bonded for actually three different projects at the same time, and we got the money, we haven't spent it, but we just have to see whether we have to hold a public hearing, to, uh, we just have to find out the legalities of it.
This surprised me.
Huh?
This would be surprised me, because that was all, it was pretty cool, no, I didn't know that it was three projects.
No, we, we got money, we got monies left over, we're just seeing what's the legalities of possibly using them, and, and whether we have to pay down the debt, or whatever we gotta do.
One more question, of the, uh, uh, clients for the launching pad down here at the, at Seven Oaks?
Just got them back.
Pardon?
Just got them back.
You just got them?
Just, just got the preliminary 30% drawn, or preliminary drawings back, so we're gonna look them over, see what they look like, and then we're gonna schedule a hearing, like, we're gonna look them, but just, just got them, so, I have any review to myself, just come in, so, I just got them in my packet, so we're gonna, and we'll be discussing them, yeah, and in near future we'll set up a, a, a meeting on them, we'll look at them, and they'll be open to, anybody wants to look at them.
So the 200,000, it, uh, whatever, then, you wouldn't wanna use what's left over from 130 plus the 200,000?
No, 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 that project, nothing to do with, nothing to do with the bonding, nothing to do with the bonding, nothing to do with, with that.
But what was the other projects, besides?
It was, uh, Duluth Street and, uh.
County Road 21.
County Road 21, that was the two projects, we have, have some preliminary estimates on them, and we have, I believe we have enough money to do them, and there may be some enough, enough money to do some of 130 or West Main, but we gotta see if we add that to the bonding deal that wasn't included, whether it's legally, we can do that, or we have another public hearing.
There are similar projects too.
I, I, yeah, 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 so, uh, so with that said, we'll have them answered by next, by the next council meeting. So if there's no other questions, do you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.